Thank you. Good evening councillors, officers and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is Councillor Ina Messina, I'm the Mayor of Darabben City Council and the Chairperson of tonight's meeting. It is my pleasure to welcome you all to this cold rainy Monday evening. I want to thank members of the gallery who were with us this evening. Thank you for bravery, elements and the courage to come in on this cold night. I declare this meeting open at 6:01pm. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warren people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters. We now call Darabben and pay respects to the elders past, present and emerging. Council pays respects to all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognises and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and their right and the right to self-determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of the community has and will always be a paramount consideration of this council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. The chamber virtually or in person is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure the working environment and public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally as well as physically. Before we commence, I'd like to introduce the councillors and the senior staff who were with us this evening. Councillor Trent McCarthy, the Deputy Mayor.
Good evening Mayor and good evening everybody.
Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening Mayor and good evening to everyone.
Councillor Tom Hannon, I think the microphones are a bit cold as well. Councillor Tom Hannon.
Good evening everyone.
Councillor Tim Lawrence.
Good evening Mayor.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening Mayor and everybody.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening all.
Councillor Julie Williams.
Hi Mayor, hi everyone.
Our offices tonight are Rachel Olivia, interim CEO. Jodie Watson, General Manager of Governance and Engagement. Sam Hewitt, General Manager, Operations and Capital. Shadi Hannah, sorry, Acting General Manager of Communities. Vanessa Petrie, the Acting General Manager of City Sustainability and Strategy. And Jacina De Sinta Stephens, Manager of Corporate Governance. Thank you and let's get underway. Item number three, apologies, councillor Dimitriatus is on approved leave of absence currently. Item number four, disclosures of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any interests or conflict of interest to declare? There are none, thank you. Move over to confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillor, can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 25th of July 2020? Moved by councillor Greco, second by councillor Williams, all those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously. Item number six is the public question time. Councillors, we'll now move on to public question time. I'd also like to address that for those public questions times, questions received prior to 12 noon today, we have a response which has been prepared where possible and will be dealt with first, noting that we have received questions on a similar issue, we'll be answering these collectively based on the themes and issues that they cover. Once these are being dealt with, I will invite the members of the public who are in attendance to approach the lecturn to ask their question. I ask that you read only your question as an introduction or no background statements and not permitted pursuant to section 15.43 of the governance rules. And I must comply with the governance rules, so no preamble during question time please. To comply, I will interject and ask that you please go straight to your question if there is any preamble. Note that the public question time will not exceed 30 minutes in duration unless extended to by resolution of council through a procedural motion, in which case it may only be extended for another one period of up to 30 minutes. Is it working? Yes. Amelie Blanchard Walker of Northkirk. Hi, my name is Amelie and I'm nine years old. My question is to do with hard rubbish. On the week ended, on the weekend, I went to Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes Re Love Shop, it was lovely. Even the microphone's cold. Testing. Thank you. I'll start again if we can restart the clock, thank you. It's, I think her name is Amelie and I'm nine years old. My question to do with hard rubbish. On the weekend, I went to Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes Re Love Shop, it was lovely. The Re Love Shop is important because it's reusing rubbish. The community was amazing and they were all volunteers. I was shocked to find out that they pay rent themselves. I think it's council's responsibility to make sure recycling is easy. Darabben Hard Rubbish Heroes help people recycle. In the city of Darabben's waste and recycling strategy, our key objective is to address waste in the context of a climate emergency. The Re Love Shop is doing exactly this. So my question is, is the council willing to pay for rent for the next shop in December and ongoing? Thank you for your question, Amelie, and thanks for your passion with recycling. Council thinks that the work of the Hard Rubbish Heroes is fantastic and we were thrilled to learn of the Heroes' recent efforts to increase recycling rates through its Re Love Shop in Northkirk. Some council staff and a councillor visited the shop and saw their great work. Council will continue to advocate for principles in our waste and recycling strategy. Avoid, reuse, recycle and recover. We recently took over the management of Darabben Resource Recovery Centre and this will assist our efforts. Unfortunately, council is unable to contribute towards or pay the rent of Re Love Shop and we'd encourage the Hard Waste Heroes to apply for community grants when the opportunities arise.
Hello everyone. The next question we have tonight is from Chris Wilkinson of Reservoir. He's asked about complaints that have been made over three years to the EPA about odour coming from the VIZI factory in Reservoir. He's asked what council can do to step in and act on behalf of the thousands of locals to get a stronger response. So, Mr Wilkinson, thank you for raising this. The EPA is the lead authority in this matter. Council's got a supporting role in ensuring that inquiries are essentially directed to the agency that can act. We understand that EPA has previously issued VIZI with an improvement notice that in part required an odour management plan to reduce the impact on surrounding residents. What we'll do is have an officer reach out to you to ensure that you have access to the public information that we understand is available and that you also have contact numbers to escalate it either with VIZI or the EPA as appropriate.
Thank you. The next question we have is Peter Gonis in the gallery this evening. Thank you Peter for your question. His questions relate to Reservoir Leisure Centre and confidential report. Does the Darabben City Council endorse the exclusion of the 50 metre pool? That's exclusion of the 50 metre pool for Reservoir Leisure Centre based on migrant communities. His second question is, given it's apparent that parts of the confidential reports have been publicly mentioned by councillors, will these reports now be made public to clarify Darabben City Council's decision? Is a reading from a confidential rapport, officers' report, a breach of Darabben City Council's policies? In response to your first question, I can confirm that council has undertaken an assessment of the community needs for the Reservoir community and it took a holistic approach to the health and wellbeing priorities. This information is needed to help plan for the community infrastructure into the future. At its meeting on the 26th of April 2022, council resolved that officers undertake investigation, early design work on options with options for different size pools to respond to the community needs for the redevelopment of Reservoir Leisure Centre to present back to council in April 2023. Officers will now report to council following this work in April 2023. In regard to your second question, without specific information about what parts of the confidential reports you are concerned about, I'm unable to provide a response. I'll ask manager of corporate covenants to contact you tomorrow to discuss the concerns you've raised. In relation to your third question, please release the releasing of the information that is deemed confidential in accordance with section 3.1 of the Local Government Act, is a breach of the councillor code of conduct and the Local Government Act?
So we have the next question here from Tim Holdsworth of Northkirk. Tim has firstly asked, further to my question of the 27th of June 2022, which was asked at an ordinary council meeting and my email of the 15th of August. Can council please confirm if it has applied for the local sports infrastructure fund which closed on the 12th of July? And if so, for which projects? So I can confirm that council has submitted an application for the local sports infrastructure fund. The project that we've applied for is the KP Hardyman Reserve Pavilion redevelopment. The redevelopment will meet the gender inclusive and accessibility criteria of the fund. I understand that when Tim asked his question in June, we indicated that we would be submitting two applications. Actually, as we've worked through the detail, we haven't found that we've got two projects that would meet the eligibility criteria. We know there's been a lot of community interest in the sports grants and essentially we've got a kind of a long history of working with this grants programme. But there are different grant streams with different eligibility criteria and a particular challenge for us this year has been many of those streams require the design and the planning of a project to have already been complete. And so in this case, we've been able to submit one application and we haven't had projects, other projects that we've been able to meet the eligibility criteria with, but we look forward to working with the state government into the future. Tim Holdsworth has a second question tonight. He's asked for an update to the community regarding the formation of the new golf holes, trail and 5.72 hectare park at Northkirk Public Golf Course. He's asked for particular information about the funding allocation to various components and can we provide a brief update on the type and quality of greens, tees, paths, picnic tables, toilet facilities? And the sort of timeframe that the community can expect. So briefly, council's decision on the 23rd of May, there was a financial table that outlined the specific budget aspects of the project. What officers are doing at the moment is working through the detailed planning. So things like the number of elements of furniture are still being worked through, as is the quality of those. We hope to have shared use of the site available from the 1st of January 2023. The other design work, so some of that detail will be ready, completed by the 30th of June 2023. And there'll be some works that continue into the financial year following that.
Thank you Rachel. Can I just, I need to, I would like to readdress this because there's been a lot of questions in the community forums and a lot in the community. The reason, the state government's local sports infrastructure grants programme only accepts one application for the project planning from local government. Any other applications can only be for projects that are ready for construction and where construction has not started. The other priority is council is progressing, the need to, planning and design still need to be done and are ready in construction, meaning that they are not eligible under this particular grants project.
So we have a question from Serena O'Mealy of Reservoir. Which EPA-approved model for remediation of contaminated soil at Clements Reserve is going to be adopted by Darabben Council? Thank you for the question, Ms O'Mealy. Where that is up to at the moment is that councils engaged a specialist environmental consultant. Sorry, give me a second. And that consultant is advising on the options for that treatment at that site. The preliminary options are both, there's two options acceptable to the EPA. What needs to happen next is that the site's primary owner, which is Vic Rhodes, needs to consider those options. So at this stage, I can't give you a specific answer, but that will come. The second question from Ms O'Mealy is, can council please provide a progress report on the purchase of Vic Rhodes' land within Clements Reserve? If the land hasn't yet been purchased, can you explain why? To progress the purchase, Vic Rhodes and Darabben Council are working together to progress the acquisition of the Vic Rhodes' land at Clements Reserve. And one of the things that we're doing at the moment is factoring in the estimated remediation costs. As I mentioned earlier, Darabben Council, actually jointly with Vic Rhodes, has engaged Enviro Pacific, who is specialist environmental consultant. They're preparing an estimate of remediation costs. The purchase of the land has been delayed by the complexity of the contamination and the need for remediation and the impact on the land value. So it is taking longer than we had originally expected. And a final question from Ms O'Mealy. Can you outline any further lobbying efforts which Darabben Council's undertaken this year with the state government to protect the Dunbarton Street grasslands from development? The site at Dunbarton Street is being developed by the state government for a mix of social housing and market housing. Darabben officers have continued our advocacy on council's position and met the appointed builders in April 2022. So the key thing that officers have been advocating for is protection of the significant patches of vegetation within the grasslands. And we've called on the builders to undertake all the appropriate ecological studies ahead of development. What I can share is that the town planning process, the formal process that will run, hasn't yet started and we will have an opportunity to advocate further through that process.
Thank you. The next, do we have Timothy from Preston? Yep, good evening and welcome.
My first question is that Darabben Council allows applications for planning permits on flood prone land for the two periods between 9th of May 2011 to 4th of December 2016 and then from 5th of December 2016 to 22nd of August 2022. How many applications to build on flood prone land have been received and of those, how many were approved?
Thank you. Thank you for coming this evening. Council doesn't typically share that level of information you are seeking publicly due to the nature of the request. You may be able to access that required information under freedom of information. Council's Freedom of Information Officer will call you tomorrow to discuss the process.
Okay. Number two, the Victorian State Emergency Service has identified old low capacity stormwater drains built under previous standards and increased runoff due to residential developments is contributing to flash flooding risks in Darabben. Since declaring a climate emergency in 2016, what actions has Darabben Council taken to upgrade stormwater drainage and decrease runoff from residential developments to help deal with the increased risk of flooding due to climate change?
Thank you. Since 2016, council has delivered several millions of dollars worth of capital drainage upgrades to reduce the likelihood of flooding in roads and residential properties.
And the third question, the three waterways of Eggers Creek, Merrick Creek and Darabben Creek are known to flood during stormwater events and an increased risk of flooding due to climate change, which puts shared pathways along those creeks at risk. So other than the short pathway that's being built in Preston as part of the level crossing removal, what projects has Darabben Council started to increase the use of active transport such as cycling within Darabben that will not be so vulnerable to flood events?
Thank you. Drainage and flood levels are important considerations when designing creek trails. Merrick Creek and Darabben Creek Trail can at times flood. Alternative bike groups are available. Tonight council reconsider a report about starting community engagement on a new climate emergency plan. We encourage you to participate as we'll be considering the best, considering the best ways to address climate risks facing our community. Thank you. Is Peter Thompson of Reservoir here this evening? His question is in relation to the Dyson Bus Services Drainage Works and in addition, a Catholic primary school, St Stephens. Will council, Darabben Council review the drainage works performed last year by, I assume, external contractors at the T intersection of Black Street and Rathcown Road in Reservoir? The works are unreliable, I am reliable, are unreliable, I am reliably informed, occasioned their, it doesn't make sense, their vehicles to suffer potential broken wind screens of rear window cracking as a result of the road surface transformation undertaken by your council. Bearing in mind, a Catholic primary school being St Stephens in Black Street has also been denied access to what was easily accessible public transport. Thanks for your questions, Mr Thompson. Council is not aware of any damage to vehicles occurring in this area as a result of the works. In relation to the works themselves, the bus routes are controlled by the Department of Transport and is best placed to answer them with your query. The relevant officer will contact you tomorrow to help you direct your query to this authority. Are there any questions from the chamber? Good evening and welcome, Joseph.
Good evening councillors, Madam Mayor and residents of Darabben. I have three questions if I might just refer to them. It has to do with the sale of minor council property assets, the policy that's going to be heard tonight by staff. I have three questions. One has to do with, I understand that those that have occupied the discontinued laneways for 12 years and over have the first right of refusal to purchase the land. The question is, how is that land going to be valued for those residents that have occupied the land for 12 years or over that have had unfettered use? The second question, and by the way, and what are the terms of reference? That will the evaluator be provided by council? The next question has to do with the payment and the payment criteria. What will the payment criteria be based on to those residents that have occupied the land for 12 years and over? And how will that be assessed by, I understand the manager of the department? And the final question has to do with costs. I understand that in the policy, it alludes to the fact that up to $8,000 approximately of costs will be borne by the purchaser. That has to do with advertising costs, legal costs that the city of Darabben will incur. Under normal conventions, a vendor does not pass on their advertising costs, their legal costs. Why is the city of Darabben passing on those costs to the potential purchaser of said land? Especially for those that have occupied the land for 12 years or over, thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. I may ask that question to be directed by Ms Watson.
Thank you for the question, Jo, or questions. Just trying to work through, taking that on board. We didn't get any detail on your written questions, so my apologies. In terms of response, what I can offer you at this stage, and I can come back to you with more information if required tomorrow, is my understanding is in terms of the value, the value would be based on market value, that's current market value for the property that would be sold. Unfortunately, clarification on the second question, I just didn't quite hear what it was you were asking. In relation to the third question, I'll take that one unnoticed, the second one. In relation to the third question around costs, you're quite correct that what's outlined in the policy is that costs will be shared between both the purchaser and council to share the costs of the sale.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
Thank you Mayor, councillors. My first question is, why did Darabben Council not adhere to the Environment Protection Act 2017 in preventing the destruction of trees, vegetation and protecting native wildlife to 49 Newman Street Thornbury? My second question is, why has Darabben Council allowed and not fined a developer working for five days without a permit to clear trees, vegetation and a 100-year-old frog pond? And in regards to the same property at 49 Newman Street, why has no action been taken? When you were notified of non-compliance of removal of asbestos.
Thank you. I'm going to direct those questions to Vanessa Petrie.
Thank you for your question, Annette. So a planning investigation has commenced and Annette, I'm going to call you tomorrow morning to discuss in detail.
This has been five days and nothing was done.
Just one moment, can we just allow Miss Vanessa to answer the question? Thank you.
I do apologise if it has been five days, Annette, I'll call you tomorrow morning so we can discuss this matter and progress it.
30 significant trees were removed without a permit and the council officers were called again and again and nothing happened.
Thank you, Annette, I did pass on your question and Vanessa will follow through with a phone call tomorrow, thank you. The next question we have is from Mr Nugent. Your first two questions don't comply, so your question, the only question we can address tonight is the question in relation to Preston Noble. Preston Oval is the only question, which is your third question, my understanding.
Well, can I just say something? There's some other work we've got to do. And I take a caution that you won't get my copies of my questions again to after I ask them now. That's being very mean spirit of the camp. Those questions are in order. The first one I want to go, let's go on, let's talk about, all right, all right, I'm not going to ask the questions, okay?
Mr Nugent, thank you.
All right, now, the first one, you asked the last meeting that the CEO to give me a call. Well, she did a week later, but, and we did agree that we would, that we would meet and we discussed what we had to discuss about Mr Shadigan and so forth.
Please ask your question.
Well, this is the question, what I'm asking. When I brought Mr Shadigan into the customer service area, the meeting was cancelled. Not that I cancelled, it was cancelled by the council.
Mr Nugent, your question that we were going to address in this chamber this evening is a question regarding Preston City Oval. The other two questions were not allowed because I don't.
No, this is from prior, prior meetings, ma'am, mayor. This has happened last week. I haven't got an answer, how can I get the answer when the mayor, oh, sorry, the CEO has written to me and cancelled it? She said I can write again, but she hasn't.
Thank you, Mr Nugent.
Hi, John.
Hello, Rachel.
I've written to you very recently, I think you have a response from me.
That you've cancelled the meeting and I can write again. Now, why should I have to when we agreed to meet and?
This is not a question, ask your next question, please, Mr Nugent.
I had a funny feeling I'd get bullied tonight, but anyway, not to worry. Why are those two questions asked? It's asking, the two questions I wanted to ask, you called them out of order. I'm only asking for an apology that what council.
He's asked your question, Mr.
I'm asking the question, I'm asking, I said I wanted to know why those two questions.
I haven't seen the questions, Mr Nugent, I understand that, I have not seen the questions, so I can't answer that.
Oh, give me the questions, ma'am, you know?
Mr Nugent, I'm asking you to ask your question about Preston City Oval. Please, can you comply with that request? Thank you.
All right, I'll answer this question. Also, before I go and ask this question, I have not received a letter from the last council meeting that I asked for.
Mr Nugent, you've already stated that, could you?
No, 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 you're getting all confused now. These are other questions and so forth. I actually asked three questions last council meeting. Two, you said you will pass on to the appropriate authority. The third question, I have not received why the customer service area was closed over the Christmas period. I have not received that letter.
Mr Nugent, if you don't get those questions by middle of next week, please send me your texts and I'll make sure that you do get those answers.
And could I also put in?
Could I ask you, Mr Nugent, to please read out the question in regards to Preston City Oval? Thank you very much.
All right then, it's good to see the council is backing the Northern Football League and not its council residents for the using of the city oval. Now, everyone knows that the leasing of the city oval is causing all the atmosphere, is causing all the problems at the Preston Market.
Please ask your question, Mr Nugent.
I am asking the question. I'm not writing, I'm just summarising it for you because I don't want to go over time, you know? Or I'll read it again. Could you please advise why the council supports the Northern Football League using the city oval in August and September over its ratepayers and shopkeepers of the city, the city of Preston? Council is well aware that the leasing out of the city oval is causing the problem with the parking in the market and the costs are going to the store and the shopkeepers in lost revenue and taking the parking. Mayor Messina, one of the most annoying things is when you give your manager the answers or options to solve this problem and they do nothing about it.
Mr Nugent, I'm sorry to hear that. I've asked you, I think I've just said it a little bit earlier, if you don't get an answer in relation to your questions, some are operational that I can't answer, but in terms of getting a reply, my understanding is that you've been written to and it is not a phone call. Generally, the letter takes a little bit of time to get to you. If you don't get a reply by the middle of next week, please send me a text, Mr Nugent. Thank you. And, yeah, Ms Olivia would like to answer that, thank you.
Hi, John. We know it's close to finals time and obviously the finals at the Oval are a big event. And in fact, almost every day that the markets open is a big event too, and so there is high demand at that time of the year. Actually, council's got strong support for both the market and for sporting clubs. And so in this case, it's a case where we're trying to balance both needs and the benefits they bring for the community. We, I know, have provided you detail in a couple of letters about the sorts of things we do to minimise that parking pressure. I don't have those details in front of me, but I understand that there's certainly work done to encourage parking to happen off-site and away from the market to minimise that pressure. And I know you've also written to us with some suggestions and, which are very welcome. Unfortunately, the particular suggestion, I think, which was about the time of finals that you made recently, isn't one that we can act on at this time because of the quality of the lighting, I believe.
That's because you haven't followed up on other questions I've asked. But that's still, have you seen the latest Northern Football League thing they put out on today's phone and so forth? They don't say about not parking in the Preston Market. They say parking is limited.
Sorry, I need to stop you, there isn't been time, so I need, just one more, I need a procedural, I need a procedural motion, sorry, Mr Nugent, to extend time by thirty minutes. That's moved by councillor Greco, second by councillor Rennie. All those in favour? Thank you, that's carried unanimously, I'm sorry to interject, but I had to do that.
As I said, have you seen the latest information that come from the Northern Football League? As I said, you've taken from September and now you put it into August. Ratepayers and the storekeepers over there, Ms Olivia, are losing money through this council non-decision to help them. I gave you the answer, I gave you two options. One, put the lighting in there.
Can I have a question, please, Mr Nugent?
Now, this is further to answer her question about parking. She said she's done about parking, well, I should say she, Ms Olivia had said she's done things about parking, but she's done nothing about telling the Northern Football League to change the times of game. As I said, I gave her two options. The other option was, Daddy, have one game until you've got your lighting set over there.
Okay, Mr Nugent, I don't know the answers to that.
Well, it's quite easy what the answer is, it's like the AFL doing.
Thank you. I'll take those questions, they're great questions, we'll come back to you. I don't know the answers in terms of, just, Mr Nugent, please, I don't know how you roster events at the Preston City Oval. I guess they have to align with the Northern Football League. I don't have your answers, I will get Ms.
Why don't you get the council to do something about it?
I will get Ms Olivia to have a look at those.
She's been looking in for five years and there's nothing been done.
Olivia has only been the CEO for.
I'm saying Ms Olivia was the.
Thank you, Mr Nugent.
Listen, let me go, cut me off for a sec.
Mr Nugent, that's all, please take a seat, thank you.
All right, I'll take a seat.
Thank you.
When am I going to get this phone call again?
Middle of next week, thank you, Mr.
Middle of next week?
Yes, middle of next week, next week.
Okay.
Mr Nugent.
Would I get an answer about why these two questions have been ruled out?
I haven't seen the questions, but they will be addressed.
Who told you they're ruled out of order then?
Governance, can you please take a seat? Now, Mr Nugent, can you please take a seat? I thank you for your attendance, can you please take your seat? You've asked your questions, everybody else in the gallery has been given the same time. I ask for no preamble. Please take a seat, Mr Nugent, thank you for attending this evening. Are there any other questions from the audience? Thank you. Please state your name and your suburb. Is there anybody else after?
Louise Kenny Shen from Reservoir.
Good evening.
Good evening, councillors and mayor. My first question you've got on the photocopy, it relates to Clements Reserve as well, so I'll just leave that one. If I can get a similar response to Serena's questions, that would be appreciated, thank you. Second question is related to Reservoir Leisure Centre. Will Darabin City Council be releasing distribution of spending for the allocated sixty million dollars or however much it was, roughly that amount, to outline what amount of that is actually being spent on the swim and leisure facilities at Reservoir Leisure Centre? And if any of that money is going into the new Global Learning Hub that's in the council's two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-four plan? And my other question is, given that we've had confidential reports appearing to be cited in the public sphere by councillors as well as during public meetings, which I know you said you didn't have examples of that before, but I will email you. Will council also be able to release more of these reports that have been publicly noted around the redevelopment of Reservoir Leisure Centre to ensure that there is transparency and to ensure that councillors are not being perceived to be misleading people with information they don't have and bringing Darabin into disrepute?
Thank you, Louise, and thank you for braving the elements. In relation to your first question in relation to Clements Reserve, I'm going to ask Sam, Mr Hewitt, to address that.
Through you, mayor, I think Ms Chen said that she'd happily take a written response, given the question's already been asked and answered by Ms O'Malley.
Thank you. And I think your third question was also asked, so we'll get right to you. Your second question in relation to Reservoir Leisure Centre and the Global Learning Hub and Council Plan two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-four, I'll get Rachel to address that. Sorry.
Thank you, hi. So what we might do is, when we write to you about the other matters, what we'll also do is just check the detail, it's in the public domain so that you've got anything that I haven't memorised. The thing that I would say is that we're at a reasonably early stage around the detailed planning for the Reservoir Leisure Centre. And so the recent decision from council was in April. And what officers are doing at the moment is undertaking investigation and early design work on options. We'll report back to council in April two thousand and twenty-three. And so that's, that's sort of the next sort of detailed level that council would make a decision. There are quite a number of steps beyond that as well, so it will take some time as we work through that. In terms of the relationship with the Global Learning Hub, they're very separate projects. They're both included in council's ten-year Capital Works Programme, which forms part of its annual budget and is, council looks afresh at its long-term capital works planning each year when it looks at the budget. And, yes, thank you. So we'll check for detail and make sure we share anything else that we've got at hand.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I do realise, a couple of my questions were asked. If I may be indulged to just ask quickly a very short, quick question? Can I also get some information about the report into the cards that were given, the fifty-dollar thirty? I cannot remember for the life of me what they were called.
I think that was, was that in the last, Love Local?
Love Local, that's the one.
In the minutes of last meeting? If it's not, it's coming, because I know we've had a briefing on it. So it's either in last month's meeting or it's going to be coming in the next, yeah.
Thank you, thanks.
We have had a briefing on it, Louise.
Thank you very much.
I think it will be formally reported at the next council meeting, am I right, Shadi? Yes, okay, so we're doing our end-of-year report across council operations to the next council meeting and that's a part of that report.
Thank you so much and thanks for indulging that, thank you.
I couldn't recall whether it's come or it's coming, thank you. Are there any other questions from the gallery? Thank you for your attendance tonight and safe journey home when you do journey home and keep dry, thank you. The next item are submissions, there are no submissions received for tonight. Item number seven is petitions, there are no petitions to be considered this evening. We have a number, councillors, we have a number of significant items on our agenda this evening and I'm committed to ensuring we deal with all the business listed within the time limits that we have. To this end, whilst I'll be permitting questions to officers prior to the commencement of the debate on each item, as permitted by our governance rules, I'll be exercising my right under the governance rule to limit questions and direct the debate commence when I'm determined sufficient questioning has occurred. I remind councillors that every item on our agenda has been subject to comprehensive council briefings and you've been given ample time and opportunity to be informed about the issues under considerations this evening. Councillors, the first report to we have to consider this evening is item number eight point one, Climate Emergency Plan Community Consultation. Are there any questions to officers? There are none, none. Good evening, councillors, I guess I'll ask for a motion, councillor McCarthy.
Move the officer's recommendation, ma'am.
That's moved by councillor McCarthy, second by councillor Rennie.
Thanks, ma'am, and thank you councillor Rennie for seconding this motion. It is quite humbling to read both the report and the attachment and to reflect on the extraordinary work that this organisation and I think significantly our community has done since Darabin not only adopted its climate emergency plan, which of course sunsets this year, but of course also made its significant and world-leading climate emergency declaration on the fifth of December two thousand and sixteen. As councillors would see, the report which we have in front of us both speaks to the achievements but also the barriers and challenges that we have faced and that I think our community faces in terms of doing everything we can to keep our community safe, to drive down emissions and to continue that work towards a safe climate future. If anything, the task is harder and more challenging and yet we can be inspired by the extraordinary work and achievement of our community in the local action that we have taken and I think significantly the role modelling work that we continue to do. Councillors, I want to just set out very clearly that there are two elements to the motion before us tonight. The first is to endorse the review report and I would want to commend, I'd like to commend our officers for their extraordinary work in bringing this together to summarising such a succinct piece of work for our community to be able to see, understand and have confidence in the depth of work that has taken place. Secondly, we also are looking to endorse a two-stage approach in the development of our new climate emergency plan. And this is the community engagement piece, which has a different flavour to it, it is fair to say, than the last time we went through this process. Darabin is the first city in the world to declare a climate emergency. We were the first city in the world to develop a climate emergency plan and we will now be the first city in the world to adopt our second climate emergency plan. And so the engagement approach that we are proposing to take really starts from a set of principles around inclusion, around diversity, around listening deeply and closely to the voices of First Nations folks and seeking to charter course to genuinely get to zero emissions by two thousand and thirty. Not just this city, because we are obviously well and truly have achieved that in terms of carbon neutrality, but in fact for our entire community. It is by no means an easy feat. As councillors would see, there are significant barriers that we face in the systems that we deal with. Those are controlled not by council but by state and federal entities and in some cases also global factors. So I commend the work that's in front of us here, councillors, and I urge you to support the report as it is. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Rennie?
Thank you. As councillor McCarthy has highlighted, we were the first council in the world to declare a climate emergency and I think that history will tell a story of that probably being the most significant decision that our council made in the last four-year term. One that will stand the test of time. And in fact, that we went on then to become the first council to have a climate emergency plan. We were the first to organise a climate emergency conference. And more importantly perhaps, a reading of this report shows just how many of the actions we identified we've been able to deliver. And actions speak louder than words and that's what we need more of. And so this process that we're starting tonight is the process of listing and engaging with our community to hear from them how much more ambitious we can be over the next plan. And we know, I think, just how much more ambitious we have to be, not just locally, nationally and globally, in order to address the climate emergency that is in front of us. So I'd particularly like to commend all the staff who have worked. So I'd particularly like to commend all the staff who have worked pretty tirelessly and with great dedication to getting us to where we are now, where we've got outcomes, tangible outcomes like VECO, which is the Victorian Energy Collaboration, which is the largest, uh, local government emissions reduction programme in the country, uh, that we've been able to achieve that and I hope that, uh, our community will come back to us through this engagement process with dozens, hundreds of ideas about how much we can demonstrate similar leadership over the next, uh, decade or five years, um, to really make sure that we do get, uh, to net zero by 2030.
Thank you councillor Rennie, are, are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Um, thank you Mayor Messina, I'd like to say a few words in relation to, uh, this important item, first of all to thank the officers for the, um, uh, forensic review that they've done in relation to the work that we've carried out in this space and as we know it's very important work, uh, the, the only things that I would like to add in relation to what we're about to embark on is, is to talk about the political context in which we're in, I think we're at, in a, a, a particular political environment, given that there's been a change in government where, um, um, climate change has now been taken much more seriously, um, certain targets have been set at the national level, the whole national conversation has changed. So the fact that we're undertaking this review with our community and given the, our legacy and the work that we've done in this space, there is an enormous opportunity here, uh, under this new political, um, climate to actually really go further because, uh, both at the state and at the federal level, we have, um, we, we would have good reception and from those, uh, other, other levels of government. Also, I think what's important to note in, in the report, uh, is all the achievements that we've, we've made and some have already been mentioned, nearly 2,000 solar panels, um, on people's homes and the fact that council as a council organisation has become, um, carbon neutral. But I think one of the features of what we're about to embark on and I think it's a really interesting feature, is that we're going through a two-stage approach of consultation. We're going to go to talk to the community about what they want, which we always do, which is really important, but also then we're going to then take in all those ideas and then go back to the community and say, have we really captured what, what, what you have told us? And I think that that's a really more thorough form of, um, consultation because often, in consultation is a lot of cherry picking by organisations, but like this, we're actually making ourselves accountable back to the community. So I look forward to the work that comes back so that we could take this issue much further.
Thank you councillor Greco, are, are there any other further speakers? We'll put that item to the vote, um, all those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's been carried unanimously. Um, the next item on the agenda is item number 8.2, the renaming of for, former Ruthen Primary School Site results of community consultation. I'm going to have to ask Ms Watson, who's making her way to the, um, microphone, to address this item first.
Through you Mayor Messina, councillors all right, wish to advise that this report needs to be deferred to the next council meeting in September, um, therefore withdraw it from consideration tonight, apologies.
Thank you Ms Watson. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item number 8.3, um, the draft memorials policy 2022, review of the civic recognition monuments and memorials policies. Are there any questions to the officers? There are none, councillors, do I have a motion? Councillors?
Um, I'd, I'd like to move the staff, uh, officer's recommendation.
Thank you, do I have a seconda? Seconded by councillor Greco, councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you Mayor, just briefly, I'll just, um, bring up my notes. So, I'll stand up. So, uh, this memorial policy is part of a, um, good review of policy and it was time to be updated. It's been done so with a, with a lens on, uh, having a diversity to reflect, um, uh, the diversity of our population, um, and if you, you know, looking around to make sure that the, um, the memorials that we see in Darabin, um, reflect the diversity of, of people who live in Darabin in a way that probably hasn't been done before. It's also been done with a very, um, important lens on the link to, in connection to place for our First Nations people and, uh, in our case of traditional owners of this land, the Wurundjeri Warung people make sure, um, that memorials are, uh, uh, appropriate and, um, with, with, with their culture and their views. This is, this is a, a topic that is really dear to people's hearts, you know, they, they have a loved one with a, a special connection to Darabin and, um, you know, want to, want to maintain that after a loved one's passed and, uh, you know, generally Darabin would like to, um, celebrate and recognise such connections, but there are practical considerations as well, um, you know, um, any kind of memorial needs to be, um, appropriately placed, needs to be, um, safe in terms of, um, regulations and also there, there are ongoing costs to maintaining, um, those kind of memorials, so needs to be balanced with practical considerations and, um, and there are other, other alternatives provided as well, where a, you know, a, a solid memorial may not be possible in a certain place, it may be more appropriate for, um, an event to, to mark someone's, um, passing or, or perhaps planting a tree or another kind of, um, commemoration. So I think this, um, this proposed policy, um, is very sensitive to all those issues and will provide, um, good guidelines going forward to work through these sensitive issues, thanks.
Thank you councillor Hannan, councillor Greco?
Thank you Mayor Messina, I'll just add a few words to what councillor, um, Hannan has said, um, memorials are a really important part of, um, how we, um, commemorate, um, the lives of, of people that have contributed to, to the local areas, not, it's not what people think of being a dusty type topic, also we've seen that, um, both nationally and internationally, memorials are increasingly becoming under question, particularly as we've seen in the United States, um, in relation to what gets memorialised. So this policy that we're doing, actually we've got a, a policy that's been written up by our, our officers, it's obviously been done with a bit of discussion with councillors, it's going to go out for community consultation and come back to us in, in October. But I think what's important to note in this particular policy is that, uh, it, it actually tries to prioritise underrepresented groups and also marginalised groups and that, and also in particular, uh, proposals that come from First Nations people, because as we can see across the Australian landscape, the, um, there isn't much out, out there, um, in, in regards to, um, commemorating, um, that we are on stolen land and that, that, and that the, the First Nation people, um, need to be, um, recognised in, in what we actually put up and erect in, in our city. So it's important that, um, we get this policy right, um, and, and I think the elements as it is there in the policy, I, I think most of the elements are there, are good. It'd be good to actually go out now to the community and test where, uh, the veracity of the policy and whether it actually captures, uh, what we need to do, because a policy like this needs to be inclusive, so as we move forward, um, we can, we can, uh, rest assured that, uh, what does get commemorated or memorialised in our city, it actually reflects the, the people that live in our city and obviously, um, reflect the, um, um, and take into account the First Australians, uh, the Indigenous people.
Thank you. Councillors, the, um, officer's recommendation was moved by councillor Hannan, seconded by councillor Greco, are there anyone who is, wishes, which, any councillor who wishes to speak against the motion? Are there any councillors that wants to speak for the motion? None, other, let's, um, put that to the vote, all those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next report we have to consider is item number 8.4, which is the review of sale of minor council property assets policies, are there any questions to the officers? As there are no questions, we'll move to the debate, oh, you have a question councillor?
No, I'd like to move the motion with a amendment.
Sure. I'm assuming it's the one that you've circulated earlier, we'll wait for that to be on the screen. Councillors, this amendment before we enter into the debate was circulated earlier and might have only just reached, um, councillor, councillor's email just whilst this meeting was in progress. Do I have any questions to the officers before I ask for a seconda? Can everybody rec, can councillors read that?
Mayor, I'm going to ask a very general question if I can, because this is the first time I've seen this unfortunately, um, if we can just get a, a, a sort of a plain language explanation as to the effect of the amendment compared to what is listed?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Can I ask Ms Watson please?
Thank you Mayor Messina, through you, I might ask Chris Ryan, manager of property and asset strategy, to respond to that.
Through you Mayor, this, um, motion, um, extends the, um, the financial hardship part of this policy, we extend, uh, the repayments from four years to eight years for people who have hardship or are on pensions and this was considered by the officers and, um, the change in front of you.
Thank you, are there any further questions to the officers, councillor Hannan?
Thank you, um, Mayor, um, I'm also just trying to, um, make sure I understand, um, the intent and the effect of, of the amendment, um, I just, am I, am I right in saying that the, with the extending the repayments period for, or I've lost it, uh, for...
Eight years.
People with pensioners and healthcare cardholders, they could be extended up to eight years, anybody else at the discretion of the manager of property and business improvement, based on financial hardship and circumstance could be extended to a period of up to six years? It's just, so there's difference for those groups?
That's correct councillor Hannan.
Okay, thank you and my, just a wording question is on point three there, um, just for consistency, I wonder if we should reword that, point two refers to pensioners and ca- health, ca- healthcare cardholders? Point three refers only to pensioners, I just wonder if we should make that consistent or we just say the change is under point two or something to that effect, that's all?
Happy to take that as an amendment if it comes one.
Is it?
Yeah, thank you, just, just want to check my understanding.
I understand the point, thank you councillor Hannan, are there any further questions? Councillor Williams and then councillor McCarthy.
How different is this to the solar panels that we currently have in the process and the policies that we use, because I see it being very similar but you might be able to...
Clarify for audience?
Thank you councillor Williams, I'll ask the general manager of city strategy and sustainability if she can speak to the matter of solar panel repayment arrangements?
Thank you councillors, um, paying back solar saver, um, occurs as you know through special charge team schemes through rates and so the rates hardship policy would apply to those payments as they would the rates.
And the duration of...
Yep. Thank you coun, um, it, that 10 years is the expected period to pay back the special charge for solar panels.
Any further questions councillor? Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks Mayor, um, I don't have any problem at all with the intent, I think it's prudent though as councillors that we just get some clarity about the range when it, in relation to point three, um, there's a reference to a, um, likely impact on future income budget for council on an annual basis, I'm not expecting an exact figure, but if we can give an eye, get an idea about whether we're talking about the thousands, tens of thousands, um, hundreds of thousands, that would be great to understand wh- what we're dealing with here.
Thank you councillor McCarthy.
Thank you councillor McCarthy, through you Mayor Messina, councillors, the, the right-of-way rehabilitation programme is, um, planned for through our 10-year financial plan and as such there's a planned annual budget of income to recover or to receive income as a result of those sale of properties, including right-of-ways, the net effect by having this change is that some of those properties, should they be purchased by somebody who exercises that option as a pensioner or a healthcare cardholder, would essentially double the time that it would take to, to purchase a property, but it would enable someone to purchase property where without that measure, it may not be possible in the same way it is for others. So essentially it would spread out the time that that income was recovered from, um, having no net effect on council's finances in the long term, but in the short term adjusting how we might forecast and plan for that income over time.
Do you have a supplementary question, I'm thinking you?
Sorry, thank, thank you and I appreciate the explanation, um, what I'm, I suppose wanting to understand and maybe the best way to ask this is, is a different way, is what is the, um, what is the current amount that council receives as an annual, on an annual basis in relation to this, just so we can understand the range of potential budgetary impact, not, not questioning the principle, just seeking to understand.
I just, I understand the question.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question councillor McCarthy, it's approximately budgeted around $600,000 per annum for the right-of-way rehabilitation programme, it's fair to say in the last few years we haven't been achieving that target because it's been more difficult for people to access and, and view those parts of the properties for us to progress that programme, um, we, what we don't have is data on those currently purchasing property that would fall into that category where they may be a pensioner or a healthcare cardholder. What I would expect is that we may have greater opportunity for those particular people to access the purchase of property, but I would expect the impact would be manageable.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? So this was moved by councillor Lawrence, do I have a seconda? Councillor McCarthy, councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, uh, thank you Mayor Messina, yes and I'm sorry to bring in that final detail of bit of extra equity, it is technical and as we had the explanation there, um, perhaps it could be up to 30% of people purchasing will be of pensions in Reservoir, but it'll be different in other parts of the city and many will not choose to do it because $3,400 is still a lot to give up in your pension to keep a little bit of extra green space. I just want to stand, uh, talk to the substantive part of the motion, um, very quickly, um, Darabin used to have a policy, well, we have over 100 kilometres of laneways that, um, uh, are going to be discontinued at some point or sold off or repaved. Many of the parts of, um, Fairfield, Preston and Reservoir never had paved laneways, they were unpaved, they were often weedy, hard to manage for the council and the council potentially looked at costs if they were actually ever going to service them properly or clean them properly. So fundamentally, we almost started giving away the laneways in the city of Darabin and we used to just charge for the legal costs and we were giving them away to avoid capital expenditure. In recent ter- terms, um, the council changed that policy and there was some outcry in the community because developers were pitted against pensioners or families in terms of competition of buying that land. This policy change at the moment doesn't go back to the old, um, free land system, but it does go back to a more equitable, equitable approach in that we take up Melbourne City Council's, uh, position of having a right of refusal for those who may have occupied the land and maybe been gardening it or mowing it, looking after it in other ways, encompassed it, um, and they're recognised after 12 years. In the law, and there is some debates about these things, they've in the past been recognised with adverse possession laws that exist after 15 years, so there's a, a little bit of a crossover there. Again, they're probably only 1% of actual situations we have with laneways, most laneways as I'd say are open, unkempt and then they're offered up. So, um, so the issue here is, as I pointed out in some examples to people, if you're on $17,000 worth of job seeker in your 50s and you're looking at buying at $30,000 worth of land, $8,000 a year is a pretty heavy price to pay, half your benefit to try and keep your tomato patch, uh, in this, uh, altered, altered motion, they may be able to do eight years and sort of stretch to be only putting out $4,000, um, a year. able to do eight years and sort of stretch to be only putting out $4,000 a year. So that's the alteration.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you also for councillor Lawrence for putting forward the amendment. And I did make a point of wanting to understand it, one, to support it and to be able to feel confident in supporting it, but also to understand what the impact of it would be. And I'm comfortable with the proposed impact, because it does deliver what I think is an enhancement of the rights of people to be able to respond at a particular point in time, even if they do not have the financial means of those who they otherwise might be in competition with in relation to these processes. And I think it's worth noting that one of the challenges that we have with this policy space is exactly the issue that councillor Lawrence has identified, which is that those who have an interest sometimes have also a financial advantage over others who may also have an interest and a very different interest, one of proximity. So if we can help balance the ledger a little bit by giving people the ability to pay off these sorts of transactions over a longer period of time, I think that's a noble approach. And if it has the support of officers and is manageable, then I think it's something that council absolutely should be pursuing. I don't have much more to say about this policy area, other than to say that it does strike me that this does come to the chamber every few years. It does come to the chamber every couple of years. It is a contested space because of the experience that people have, which can be varied depending on how people have engaged in those particular assets, whether they have been the extension of their own property and all their neighbours' property, or whether they become new property that is available, such as laneways that become available for public purchase. But it is really important, regardless of where we land in this, that we are consistent, clear, transparent, and obviously have measures for equity so that all can participate. On that basis, I'm happy to support what we have.
Thank you. According to the governance rules 4.1m, I have to ask, is there any councillor who wishes to speak against the motion? Are there any further speakers? councillor Greco?
Mayor Messina, I just want to say a few words, because this is an item that particularly affects a lot of people in my ward in Reservoir. And I just wanted to make a couple of points. I'm really happy that councillor Lawrence has included the insertion that he has and made this part of the motion, because particularly in the northern end of the city, there's a high number of people that are pensioners or on low income and the facts spec for themselves in regards to that. So having this inclusion creates a little bit more socio-economic fairness and equity in regards to these particular issues as they arise. And I think that's something that we need to pay particular attention to in putting everyone, creating a sort of a level playing field from an economic perspective. I think what's important also to mention is that this policy is different to the policy that we currently have, in that it gives a first right of purchase to people that are currently occupying the property. And that's something that we didn't do before. So that's actually a positive point in recognising and giving some, you know, if you like, recognition to those property owners. Also, what it does is that it gives a 50% discount on costs associated with dealing with the transaction. And that's really important, again, something that we didn't do before, before all the transaction costs were incurred by the purchaser. Like this, we're actually coming halfway in relation to that. So I commend the policy, I commend the work that the officers have done. And I think it's inclusive enough, and it actually moves us a little bit more forward in taking on the interest of our ordinary ratepayers, particularly low-income property owners.
Thank you councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Thank you councillor Lawrence. Just want to say thank you councillor Lawrence for the alternate motion, and then seconded by councillor McCarthy. I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That's been, thank you councillors, it's been carried unanimously. The next item we have, the next report we have to consider is item 8.5, property matters. Are there any questions to the officers? As there's no questions, we'll now enter into debate. Councillors, do we have a motion? councillor Greco? You're moving this officer's recommendation?
I'm moving the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second? Seconded by councillor Lawrence. So moved by councillor Greco, seconded by councillor Lawrence. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. This is an item that particularly, it's in my ward. It's in relation to declaring a particular laneway as a highway, and it's come to council, for the council then to make the final decision in relation to actually enacting that. This is a laneway at the back of High Street near Barrow Street. And it's about 500 metres of a laneway. And what's happened as a result of this report is that there's been public notice, the community has been informed, and there's been no submissions in relation to objections in regards to council declaring this a public highway. And that, from an officer's perspective, and we're here tonight, to consider that the roadway is reasonably required for public use. So that's what we're doing here tonight. Also, I would want to point out too, it's actually quite advantageous to a development that's occurred there recently. And I think it's only proper to note that the developer of that particular row of units actually fronted up all the cost of creating that roadway, and also the cost of the work underneath the roadway. So even though we are declaring it a roadway, which is advantageous to a particular locality there, developers have come forward with a great contribution in making sure that that roadway was actually able to be constructed, not at ratepayers' expense, but at the expense of the developer. So all matters considered, I think we should endorse the motion that's before us and declare it as a roadway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Greco. councillor Lawrence?
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor Messina, these networks of laneways in Reservoir are quite extensive. This one happens to be a laneway across a main, behind a main transit corridor. So it's something that you would expect in Northcote, would have beautiful bluestone covering. Of course, in Reservoir, it's just dirt. So in this case, we're going the opposite way. We're going, taking it to a public road and having a private developer fund us so that we can have it as a proper serviceable road, because it's running right behind High Street and a whole lot of properties that will be going into transition to units and various things. So this is sort of going the other way and dealing with some of those hundreds of kilometres of laneway, but making them proper roads.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Councillors, are there anybody who's, any councillors wishing to speak against the motion? There are none. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you councillors, that's been carried unanimously. The next report we have to consider this evening is the proposed governance rules. Are there any questions to the officers? As there are none, we will now enter into debate. Councillors, I remind you that once we enter into debate, there'll be no further questions. Councillors, do I have a motion? councillor Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move the recommendation in the report.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Williams. councillor Rennie?
Thank you. It's a little unusual in the middle of a council term to review the governance rules. It is a requirement that they be reviewed at the beginning of each council term. But in this instance, there is a requirement, because of the new local government act, that they would be reviewed so that we can incorporate and put in place procedures to hold meetings virtually. This is obviously something that's happened as a result of the pandemic. State legislation had to change to enable this, but now it is a requirement that all councils reflect this in their governance local laws. And so for people wondering why we're doing a review of the governance rules midterm, that's essentially the reason. And most of the changes proposed, not all of them, but most of the changes proposed tonight, actually relate to the conduct of council meetings virtually, and how community can participate, and how councillors can participate. And I think anyone who doesn't understand why that's necessary has probably been hibernating for the last two years. There's a few features in these rules that will also streamline our meetings and make them hopefully a little shorter than some have been. And I think this is pretty critical, especially if they're going to be held online. Anyone who's spent much time over COVID in online meetings knows that it doesn't seem possible really for them to effectively go for the length of time that meetings sometimes go for in person. Online meetings need to be conducted pretty efficiently and effectively in order for good decision-making to occur. So I commend these rules to everyone, noting that this is not the last time we'll look at the governance rules. A more comprehensive review of a number of features will take place, I'm sure, at the beginning of the next council term.
Thank you councillor Rennie. councillor Williams, would you like to speak?
Nothing further to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anybody who, any councillor wishes to speak against the motion? councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I was nearly going to abstain, but I will speak against the motion at the moment. As has been noted, there's a lot of changes with COVID in terms of pushing us into online meetings out of necessity. And then there was a lot of contradictions with meeting rules when we did that, because like all things with COVID, governments were changing things, ourselves included, and then, you know, reviewing them later. So we've had some community feedback on some of those things. Generally, people like hybrid meetings and want to look forward to even participating online as well themselves. So those changes are just common sense. Much of the rest of the laws are what we had previously signed off about a year and a half ago, and aren't remarkable. Why I still can't really vote for this, it just goes against my grain, is the removal of just a person turning up and asking a question. It's been a feature of the city of Darabin since 1996. I think it marks us different to eastern suburbs councils, where we're happy for people to turn up, speak in broken English, whatever, and people without education to turn up and just give a verbal presentation, and that they can always see their mayor, and that we're always, not an alternative to the customer service by any standards, but we're always open for business. Maybe it's quaint, you know, but I think there's people in the community who still want to hang on to that. So I really can't raise my hand for killing that off.
Thank you. Is there any councillor wishes further, who wishes to speak for the motion on following the governance rules? councillor Hannan?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in favour of the proposed governance rules and the recommendation towards that. As councillor Rennie has stated, the main reason behind the change at this time is to enable hybrid meetings. And the driver for that, this has been driven by state government with a very extremely short timeline. I'd like to thank particularly our staff for enabling this to be managed within a very short timeline. And also to the members of our community who took the time to give feedback. And overall, the main feedback was that the community are supportive of being able to have hybrid meetings. It is a step towards further opening up our processes. You know, you don't even have to come out necessarily to council hall on a cold night. You can, you know, take part from your own home. Not all the time, but in certain circumstances it allows that. Also, there was seeking clarity about submission and speaking to questions. My understanding of the feedback was it was more about just having clear rules about, you know, what time you need to get your question in, what's the process for speaking to it, and overall about having shorter meetings. This is actually a key point. This is not a trivial point. It's a health and wellbeing issue for the people directly involved, us as councillors and the many staff here who make it happen. But there's also an accessibility point here. This council has had a tendency of having very long meetings, five-hour meetings. That's simply impossible for most people to attend, unless we have a real focus and take some, sometimes hard decisions to make these meetings shorter. People just won't be able to attend. And then that's a bigger threat of exclusion of average people to be able to come along.
Thank you councillor Hannan. Are there any councillors, is there anybody else who's wanting to speak against the motion? councillor Greco?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining in relation to this item. Firstly, I'd like to acknowledge all the good work that's been done by officers in regards to this, given the time constraints. But I believe that from my perspective, there are particularly the exclusion of fronting up and asking a question. I think that's a diminution of the democratic process. I understand the point about, you know, the times of our meetings and the duration of them and things like that. Democracy is messy. Democracy is not efficient, but democracy is needed. If we wanted less democracy, we saw what happened at the federal level where Scott Morrison took on six or seven ministries in order to, you know, possibly railroad questions. Democracy takes time. And if we are to make meetings shorter and things, I don't think we should be cutting into the time of people that come to the gallery and to ask questions. If need be, we need to cut into our own time. I think it's important also from a social equity perspective for people with low literacy skills, for people whose first language is not English, so that they can front up, ask their question, and put it out. And also, we know there's a lot of people that, in terms of the digital divide in our city, and so people don't have access to, you know, putting in a question online and things like that, or even coming down to the council to hand in their question and things like that. So I think from a sense of equity, and a sense of democracy, and a sense of transparency, and making sure they're very accessible, I think that we should have kept in the opportunity. We saw three or four questions tonight even asked, just off-the-cuff questions that people just fronted up, asked their questions. We should have maintained that. As a result of that, everything else, I agree in that, but I think it's such an important point of principle that I'll be abstaining in regards to this.
Thank you. Abstaining is a vote against. Are there anybody who wishes to speak for the motion? councillor Rennie, you have a right of reply.
Thank you, Mayor. We are a council that talks a great deal about transparency and accessibility. And I'd suggest that both transparency and accessibility are enhanced by the smooth running of council meetings, where someone who's interested in an item on the agenda can look at the agenda and have a reasonable expectation of when that item might be heard. One of the most unpredictable parts of the council meeting at the moment is question time. It's never quite clear whether it might go for 20 minutes or 60 minutes, and that can push back every item on the agenda. We assume that people will be interested enough that they'll hang around anyway, then we are ignoring the fact that not everybody has the luxury of being able to come out and sit in this council chamber for four hours on a Monday night, on the chance that their item might be heard at some point in the evening. And so I think for the purposes of accessibility, it's really important that we take responsibility for putting in place the rules that will streamline our meetings. Similarly with transparency, there's nothing transparent about having a five-hour meeting. It means that anyone who wants to go back and watch the meeting because they were interested in a particular item, might conceivably have to watch five hours of footage to actually look at the debate that interests them. A bit like saying it's transparent to give someone a million pages of documents when they give an FOI request or something, you know. That's not actually transparent, that's just hiding things. And so I think by having efficient and effective decision-making in a meeting, and that's what these rules enable, we are, you know, holding ourselves to a higher standard of transparency and accessibility for our community.
Thank you councillor Rennie. I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? That's councillor Hannan, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie. All those against? councillor Lawrence? And councillor Greco is, councillor, are you against the motion? I'm just...
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining? Okay. So there's two abstains, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco have abstained. That motion's been carried. Thank you councillors. Apologies councillor Lawrence, I thought you said you were going to abstain, but you're speaking against the motion. I thought that's how you started the debate. So sincerest apologies. The next report we have to consider this evening is item 8.7, the governance report, August 2022. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? As there are no questions, we will now enter into debate. Once the debate is... Once the debate is entered into, there'll be no further questions. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Rennie? You're moving...
Apologies, Mayor, the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second up? Councillors, is there a sec, councillor Hannon? That's moved by councillor Rennie, seconded by councillor Hannon. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, yes, Mayor. Once again, this is the governance report that comes to us each month, and it contains a number of standard reports. In particular, those include summaries of the advisory committee's council briefings and other informal meetings of councillors. And it also notes the reports of mayors and councillors that we've submitted prior to this meeting. I think the particularly interesting items in this report this month that I'd like to draw people's attention to include the fact that we are endorsing the extension of the memorandum of understanding with the Islamic Society of Victoria or the Omar bin Al Khatab Mosque. This is a fabulous initiative that this council undertook a number of years ago to have an M O U, and I think it stood the test of time and has helped us to develop a very strong relationship with this organisation that we've been able to build on. And so I'm really pleased that by virtue of this endorsement tonight, the Mayor will be able to go ahead and sign a new M O U. The other item of note is that this governance report signals the wrapping up of the COVID parklet programme. So this is the programme whereby small businesses, particularly eateries in the municipality, were able to set up little parklets on the street. Those were always intended to be temporary for the period of COVID. To my mind, this is a great shame in lots of ways, because I think there are some streets in which they've added enormous value. And I think it's now incumbent upon us as a council to think about how we can put in place new systems which enable these businesses in our municipality to benefit from this type of programme going forward. That would almost certainly involve the payment for use of council space, which is what we would typically imagine. In wrapping this up and noting that there won't be any further extension of this programme beyond the 30th of September, I think it's also timely to thank the state government for their support of this programme. I think it is innovative, and in some cases, we know from looking at streetscape improvements that it's brought great benefit. And I think there are some instances where the benefit that has been brought is a benefit that could extend beyond COVID, and it would be fantastic if this was one of the sort of silver linings to come out. It's this idea that we could have much more European, I suppose, streetscapes with this cafe life in the street, because I think it's an excellent use of public space. But also from an equity point of view, it's probably a use of public space that we want to see people pay for. So, as I say, I think it's now incumbent upon us as councillors, and I'll certainly be asking that we have some kind of report to look at how we can make a programme such as this available in the longer term, so that where cafes, eateries, restaurants, bistros can add to public amenity by having these kind of facilities, by using the street in a way that benefits everyone, that we are a council that says, yes, we can do this, come and work with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments to add to councillor Rennie's comments, which I endorse. So there's a couple of other elements I thought I'd mention as part of these governance rules. Sorry, not governance rules, governance report. Councillor Rennie's already mentioned the extension of the M O U with the Islamic Society of Victoria, and also the coming to the end of the parklet programme. And I would agree that, you know, it's one good thing that's come out of COVID generally is a sort of rethinking of that use of public space, but I support the need for equity concerns, financial concerns, we need to rethink how we do that longer term. I just wanted to point out that this is an example, the very last item, we talk about transparency and accountability. This is an example where council every month fronts up about some of the inner workings of council, some of the official kind of papers, but also going behind the scenes a bit, you know, things like, you know, down to the $25 Fairfax subscription on the CEO's credit card account, just to show there is nothing to hide here. And in fact, I want to commend staff for looking to go a bit further. We're now getting a list of briefing topics and in a summary, not only on the decisions that committees are making, but actually the briefings that staff are providing to councillors. So you know exactly what's coming up on the agenda. And also, in terms of accessibility for future meetings, you can see there the list of future meetings laid out for the next 12 months plus, and there is quite a lot of hybrid meetings planned to go to that, you know, trying to make those meetings as open and inclusive as possible. So I endorse this recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. Councillor Rennie moved it, councillor Hannon seconded. Are there any councillors who are against the motion? As there are none, I just want to highlight before we go to the vote that Darabin City Council ordinary meeting on the 24th of July 2023 will be off-site at Northkirk. And in addition to that, the ordinary meeting on the 23rd of October 2023 will be off-site in Bandura, will be going back on the road. And I look forward to exploring the parklets. I thought, just as councillor Rennie mentioned, there was a bit of a cultural vibrancy using the civic space in a different way. Councillors, I will now put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next report to consider this evening is item number 8.8, the Contract Reward, C T 202 double one five one Plumbing and Associated Services Panel. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? As there are no questions, I'll remind councillors once again, once we enter into the debate, there'll be no questions allowed. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillors?
Mayor, I'm happy to move the officer's recommendation. I'll just ask that, thank you. Mayor, I'm just confirming that that aligns with what I have.
Thank you. You're confirming that is, you're moving that? Yep. Do I have a second up? Councillor, that's moved by councillor McCarthy, seconded by councillor Williams. Councillor McCarthy, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thanks, Mayor. I think it's pretty straightforward. I'll keep it brief. This, of course, follows a tender process. Council's existing contract for some of this maintenance has come to an end. There was an initial term of two years. The report, as councillors would know, identify that there have been some shortcomings with the current contract, and so that that has triggered the process here that we have in front of us here to go out for a further contracting process. And of course, as councillors would know, with every such process, these processes are in line with council's social and sustainable procurement policy. Importantly, the process of analysis, as councillors would see, doesn't just look at cost, it also looks at delivery and a range of other factors as well. And I'll just mention those. Some of those include sustainable initiatives and practices, local business content, experience and expertise, social initiatives and practices, and service delivery, and the price of goods, of course, as well. So on that basis, happy to support the recommendation as listed there, Mayor. And of course, there are, as councillors can see, two separate entities in relation to the two contract provisions in front of us.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Williams?
Nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any councillors who are wanting to speak against the motion? Before we put that item to the vote, you mentioned procurement. I want to highlight that David Chikala actually won an award in relation to procurement, I read on LinkedIn. So congratulations to David Chikala. Councillors, I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. Councillors, item number nine, notice of motion. There are no notice of motions to consider. Item number 10, urgent business. There are no items of urgent business to consider. Closing meeting, item number 10, in accordance... Yep, yep. In accordance with section 66.2 of the Local Government Act 2020, council may resolve to close the meeting to the members of public to consider the item designated confidential by the interim chief executive officer in accordance with section 3.1 of the Act. Is there a mover for the move of the recommendation to close the meeting? Moved by councillor Rennie, seconded by councillor Williams. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. I declare the meeting closed to the members of the public at 7:40 p.m. and request officers to cease the live streaming. Can I just say thank you very much to all those who have attended this evening and a safe journey dry home?